All right, we're live.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This meeting is called in order, called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 5th, 2022. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on October 14th, 2022, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on October 14th, 2022, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment, or if the statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this public meeting, is repetitive, or not on a topic that is relevant to the borough's governing body. Okay. Councilman Hale, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Burrell Mittler?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera? Councilwoman Foster?
Elsie?
Here.
Councilman George? Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovir?
Here.
All right. Council members, are there any questions on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to our council reports. And as usual, I... Borough Clerk? I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you. I was just looking for the Borough Administrator's report, and I see it's on the next page. Okay, so we'll move on to the council reports, as I mentioned, and we will go in order of how you all appear on my screen. So Councilwoman Foster, you're up first.
Oh, wow, I have the hot seat. Good evening, everyone. A couple of things I want to mention. We got our use of force, our police department's use of force, the report was out, and I'm happy to say that we had no incidents with any type of use of force. So we're moving in the right direction. So I'm happy, I'm really happy about that. A couple of other things. The police department is also going to be doing their trunk-a-treat on Monday, October 24th, and that will be from 6:00 till 8:00 p.m. And anyone who's interested in participating or helping out can contact Officer Amera. So it's going to be trunk-a-treat at the community center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We also, that earlier that day, on the Monday, the 24th, the Knights of Columbus will be giving their annual safety award to members of our police department, fire department, and first aid squad. That's going to be at the police headquarters, that's Monday, the 24th, and that will be at 4:00 p.m. if anyone who's interested in coming out. Sorry about that. One second. The other big thing, and this is big, that October is Fire Prevention Month, Fire Safety Month. And there's a lot of things that we need to be all collectively be aware of, such as changing our carbon dioxide detector, the battery-operated radar detector, our fire alarm, is this a time of year when it's a good idea to switch everything over as we go through the change of season? And in the schools and at home, there's information available from Sparky, the firehouse dog, that you can get information for the entire family. And that can be found at sparkyschoolhouse.org. And it's such information, such as teach children how to recognize sounds for fire safety. There's a lot of fun videos for the entire family, as I said before. It also teaches children about fire safety in the kitchen, and it teaches students how to help people and keep safe, keep our community safe as well. So please, if you have a moment, please go take a look at those videos that are available and keep us all safe. On pedestrian safety, this is a big one, especially this time of year, when it gets dark much earlier and we need to utilize the sidewalks. I can't say it enough how much, how important is that we all utilize the sidewalk to keep each and every one of us safe? Because it gets dark so early, oftentimes people are wearing dark clothing, and they are not easily seen. So we want to make sure that all of us are safe and get to and from our house safe. And, you know, when we're on that cellphone heads up while we're crossing the street, let's make sure that we all get home safely and slow down in our town. Daylight saving time, as I said before, the daylight saving time is going to be Sunday, November 6th. So I'm not happy about that, but it's that time of year when we all have to do what we have to do to keep safe. And then on Friday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m., we're going to be having our Veterans Day Parade, and that's going to be at the Doughboy at 11:00. So whoever can come out, please come out, show our veterans our support, because they never get tired of keeping us safe. They never got tired of keeping us safe. So that's my report as it pertains to Veterans Day and the whole public safety agenda for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Hirsch, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilperson Foster, for your report. I changed my smoke detectors this weekend, actually. So yeah, that's great advice, please do that. Hi, everyone, my name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Borough's Arts and Recreation Committee. My hope is that you're doing well tonight with everything going on in the world. Highland Park will be hosting a community blood drive on Wednesday, November 9th, from noon to 6:00 p.m. at the community center here at Borough Hall downstairs. This is a partnership between the Borough and the New Jersey Blood Services, and I'm so grateful that this is finally coming to fruition. Special thanks to Highland Park hero Joe Romano, Joe, I hope you're watching, for doing the heavy lifting and making this all happen. Also, special thanks to Kim McGraw and our staff at the community center as well for making this goal become reality. But in order to ensure our event will be successful, we need at least 50 people to sign up. Donating blood is easy, it takes only about one hour of your time, and each donation can save up to three lives. Your donation can help cancer patients, accident victims, people undergoing surgery, women during childbirth, people with sickle cell disease, and many more. Let's do our part in helping to save lives. Will you please help? And to sign up, and I'm going to, I'm going to go, I'm going to bypass the action, the actual action that I was going to do during my council reports tonight, where we all sign up to donate blood. But please visit nyc.org/drive and search sponsor code 65031. Please join me. Also, this information will be available on the Borough's Facebook page. Next up, our annual Halloween costume parade and festival is right around the corner. Dress up or come as you are on Sunday, October 30th, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Highland Park Community Center parking lot for music, dancing, bouncy houses, carnival games, face painting, crafts, refreshments, and giveaways. All good parties are in the street and in the parking lot, so I was very happy to see this. Our annual Veterans Day observance and parade will start at 11:00 a.m. on Friday, November 11th, at the Doughboy Monument. After the ceremony, the parade will proceed down Raritan Avenue, ending in New Brunswick. Joseph Anton Guchek Senior will serve as the Grand Marshal. Highland Park Public Schools will not be in session on Veterans Day. However, the choir will be participating and sending a soloist to sing the National Anthem. Please come and join the community in this observance. The annual bike, community bike rodeo powered by the Highland Park Police Department, Keep Metal Sex Moving, the New Brunswick Bike Exchange, and the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, SWAC, was a fun and educational success. The annual event, which took place at the Bartle School parking lot, again with the parking lots, on October 12th featured safety tips, protective and reflective gear, free bike inspections, and a road safety course. The Borough regularly hosts bike, automobile, and pedestrian safety programs like the bike rodeo to keep up to date on the many simultaneous efforts to make Highland Park safer for cyclists and pedestrians, or to volunteer, we need you. Please reach out to Sergeant David Soden, D-S-O-D, at hpboro.com, councilwoman foster@e-foster@hpborough.com, or me at m-hirsch@hpborough.com. Also, go to our website, www.hpboro.com, where you can find the other elements of our pedestrian and bike safety plans, including Highland Park's Safe Routes to School, which is funded in order to improve our key crosswalks and pedestrian ramps, and our bicycle and pedestrian plan, which is also really worth reading and really maps out kind of the long-term vision for bicycle and pedestrian mobility in Highland Park. Many thanks to the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee for their hard work, and also Councilwoman Susan Walker, who worked very, very hard on that. Just a couple more things, and this is a long report tonight. Highland Park High School's Class of 1982 will host a fundraiser to name the Robert Stevens Auditorium stage in memory of their classmate Willie Garson Pazimont, whose love of acting flourished on that stage under the direction of Robert Stevens. You might know Willie by his stage name, Willie Garson, and he was probably best known for his portrayal of Stanford Blatch on the HBO show Sex and the City, and he is first a Highland Parker. The brick entry path to the school will be lined with engraved bricks personalized for the donor, you, your family, or to honor a loved one, or to make a memorial. This path is used for graduation as well as for everyday use. There's only a limited number of bricks, and please place your order as soon as possible. Bricks will be installed at the end of the year. To donate a brick, please go to donate.brickmarketers.com/hphs. If you have any questions, you can email me, or you can email leafyourmarkhp@gmail.com. And the money raised will also be used to upgrade the sound system in the auditorium. The track and field restoration is complete. I just encourage everybody to go down and reclaim this valuable community asset. It was out of commission for a while, and it is just beautiful. Many congratulations, many thanks to the contractors that worked on this project, as well as our Borough staff for seeing this through. That's my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, Councilman Hale, do you have a report?
Good day, Mayor. Wanted to let everybody know that Main Street Highland Park is going to have a jack-o'-lantern carving contest on Monday, October 31st. If you are a pumpkin artist, carve out your pumpkin and bring it down to 212 Raritan Avenue, Main Street offices, between 9:30 and 2:30 on Monday, October 31st. They will be put out under the Walker Witz Pavilion from 2:30 to 5:30 for a public judging of them. It is important that all of the pumpkins are hollowed out, because they have to be carried from the Main Street building down to the pavilion, and they're heavy if you don't take all the stuff in the gook in the middle out. So please take all that stuff out before you do that. They will be, there will be pictures of all of them posted online, and voting will go up until November 3rd at the Main Street site. So if you are a pumpkin carver, come and show us your work. And then if you are a pumpkin art connoisseur, please show us your votes. So come out and take the votes. The winner gets a Highland Park gift card to be used in Highland Park stores. So other things going on with Main Street, I think, in our downtown. On the 29th of October, the 11th of November, and the 26th of November will be the Art, Craft, and Maker Market from 4:00 to 8:00, where we have local artisans and craftmakers come and share their wares. So come and support that. Also, on the 26th of November, will be a gingerbread contest, gingerbread house contest, and tree lighting. And then on the 12th, on the 18th of December, I know we're getting kind of far away, there'll be the menorah lighting. So lots of exciting events going down downtown, even though it's getting cold. Come on out and support all of those various events that Main Street Highland Park is putting out. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that the farmer's market will continue all the way through December. So come on out, dress warm, and buy farmer's market goods. Then lastly, just wanted to let people know that there is some new public art that's up on Benner Avenue. There's some really cool street murals that are funded by the Neighborhood Preservation Project. There's about three of them up on Benner. They're on the street, they're sort of in the bumpouts, and I think they look great. So we're going to have a couple more of those coming up. Lots of really great things coming up on Woodbridge Avenue with the Neighborhood Preservation Program. It's really an exciting thing to see some of those things come to fruition. I won't go into the laundry list, we'll just announce them as they come. So that's my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, just briefly, first want to give everybody an update. I know everyone was patiently waiting for the property assessors to come around. They've been a little bit behind, still finishing up with their prior town as well. So we have, that wasn't pushed off, is still going on. And still, I will give updates on the process on that as well. Also, what I've been speaking about for a while now, the Anchor Program, which is the Affordable New Jersey Communities for homeowners and renters, that replaces the homestead rebate. So, but you have to apply online. I'm sure some people already received some applications in the mail. If you have not, you can go on the state gov website, and that deadline is December 30th. And this applies to renters and homeowners, and the requirements are, they have brought in the requirements. So income levels have been raised, so more people can actually qualify. So I really encourage our residents to really apply for this, even if you think you don't qualify, go on there. And this is all, it's for 2019. So just in 2019, you're a homeowner or tenant here, go on and apply. And that's my report, Mayor. Wishing everyone a wonderful spooky Halloween.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, then Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I don't have one tonight, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, then, that's good, because I have kind of a longish report. So, folks, on this beautiful crisp fall day, I was delighted to join so many of our residents and Councilman Hirsch at the ribbon cutting for the Reformed Church of Highland Park's Affordable Housing Corporation's latest new beautifully renovated property in town. This magnificent multifamily house will become home to several families recommended by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. I hope you will all join me in welcoming our newest neighbors to our community when they move in. So Highland Park is a community rich in creativity. That artistic bent is on full display in our downtown, not only on our colorful and memorable park benches and murals, but for the next weeks in our store windows. We are in the midst of our annual Windows of Understanding Art Display throughout Raritan Avenue. Take a long autumn stroll down Main Street, purchase things in our stores, and enjoy the works of our local artists on display. A big thank you goes out to Councilman Hirsch, who is the liaison to our Arts Commission, and to John Marin, and the entire Highland Park Arts Commission, and Main Street Highland Park for bringing these unique pieces to all of us. Thank you also to Councilman Hale for the work he does with Main Street. I too want to thank Highland Park resident Joe Romanoff for organizing an all-important blood drive that Councilman Hirsch mentioned, will be occurring here in Highland Park. The blood drive will be held on November 9th from noon to 6:00 p.m. at our community center. Please consider making a donation of blood. For those of you who haven't seen her on television, TikTok, or on the front page of the Home News Tribune, I'd like to introduce you to a Highland Park treasure, Ms. Tova Friedman. Tova, as most of us in town know her, has published a book about her childhood experiences in Nazi Europe and the Nazi death camp of Auschwitz-Birkenau. The book, The Daughter of Auschwitz, tells her story and sends a message of warning to all of us living in today's world that hate quickly can turn to killing. Congratulations again to Tova on her book reaching the top recommended lists in several newspapers and communities across the country and the world. Thank you, Elsie, and everybody else. For those of you who haven't, I'm sorry. I hope you will all join me in congratulating Council President Phil George, who could not be with us this early in the meeting, for receiving one of this year's ANJEC Municipal Environmental Leadership Awards. This award is only for elected officials who promote causes and improvements in their communities. Congratulations to Council President Phil George, who has been the council's Chair of our Public Works Committee, including our Sustainable and Environmental Committees. And finally, he deserves that, thank you. And finally, our next council meeting, scheduled for November 1st, will be held in person in council chambers as long as the COVID numbers continue to go down. For now, we will be following the same format as we have in the past, but with live streaming capabilities. However, we will be looking into a new format for our future meetings that might allow for some form of additional participation after November 1st. Please bear with us as we explore this, as we want to address some technical, procedural, equity, and access issues, our own technical capabilities, and continue to get advice from our attorney regarding all of this. And that is my report. Okay. It's time for our first public participation session. Total time for this session is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to the items on the agenda. If you want to speak on a topic that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later this evening. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this public meeting, is repetitive, or not on a topic that is relevant to the borough's governing body. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad, or select the raise hand button on this application. Please press star six to unmute yourself. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on this agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
Okay, Mayor, I see we have 30 attendees at this point in the meeting, and four hands raised. The one thing I did want to mention, just because we do have three ordinances on for a public hearing, I just wanted to remind folks, there's also an opportunity to speak on those specific topics when we get to the public hearing at that time. So don't be alarmed if you don't have an opportunity at this point. So with that, I will call on the first hand, which is MSBFRCT. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, hi, Mary Booteon, 709 Madison Ave. Regarding the proposed ordinance 2061 for closing South Third, excuse me, I just want to say, you know, it's really essential for Highland Park to have a public square or pedestrian mall for, you know, our gatherings, the farmer's market, movies, everything. So, you know, that's not my concern at all, you know, we have to have that, and it's terrific that we do. But I think, in particular, if we could hold up on the ordinance tonight, it seems a bit premature, as there are quite a few more aspects to really be fully explored, and I'll talk about those in just a minute. You know, we might find that we really don't have to rely on closing South Third in order to get all the things we want, and also save those residents and commercial businesses. There are some really serious headaches, including the potential for increased taxes on those businesses if they are deemed to be a benefited property, if the pedestrian mall is created there. Speaking of taxes, it was only three years ago that Highland Park received a $25,000 grant, and we spent Highland Park taxpayer money to fund and establish the existing public square and farmer's market and pavilion where it is now. So it's important not to be cavalier with taxpayer money, that only 36 months later, there seems to be a big rush to move it all, and in particular, to move it to South Third, as opposed to possibly somewhere else. It seems like it would make sense to at least have some serious discussions with the Track C Conditional developer, Mr. Tansman, about accommodating public space at the front of their proposed building, since mixed-use development requires retail on the first floor anyway. Another option, and I really hope this one might possibly work, would be to invest the money we receive from the Tansman sale of our parcel there and use that money to purchase the long vacant Sunoco site at South Second and Raritan, instead of focusing just on South Third. And that could possibly then be our new pedestrian mall and farmer's market area. And if there was some way to pull that off, everything would still be on Raritan Avenue. It would not disrupt as many existing businesses or residents as would happen on South Third, and it would make great use of the Sunoco parcel once and for all. We should also think about the chance to expand the use of our existing facilities on the south side by routing the farmer's market, et cetera, to the community center or the Borough Hall lot. Even the defunct Stop &amp; Shop lot might be worth exploring as a temporary measure, at least until more can be, you know, developed here.
Mary, I'm sorry. I heard something in the background a moment ago.
I was just 30 seconds, she has about 10 seconds left.
Okay, I couldn't make out what you said, thank you.
Oh, thanks, Gil. The last things I was going to mention was that, you know, again, before passing the ordinance, I think we should at least get traffic data for South Third, the same as was done for South and North Second, and South and North Fourth, not just accident data on Third. And we should do a comprehensive survey of South Third homes and businesses that would be directly impacted and those adjacent. Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, Borough Administrator, is there anyone?
It looks like Alvin Chin is up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Alvin Chin. I live at 31 South Third. I'd like to comment on a couple of things. One, I'm glad One, I'm glad to see that there's a rent control proposal on tonight's agenda. It's been far too long, and we're past due for that sort of thing. Second, that there's an ordinance to extend affordability controls and have set-aside. I'm pleased with that, too. Please vote to pass that. Now to the pedestrian mall. I believe that a pedestrian mall, the one that I think we already had during the pandemic, was a great idea then and would be a great idea to make permanent. I am opposed to delaying the vote by saying, oh, we need to do a study first, contrary to Ms. Botian's comment. I also am under the impression that we're unable to find other good parcels like the Sunoco, which, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the owner won't sell to the borough until it's a cold day in hell, pardon my language. So this seems like the best opportunity, and I have seen a benefit to public safety and to air quality from closing that street compared to when it was open and in the past would have some traffic that I felt was inappropriate for the speed limit and for the residential character of the block. That's my piece. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alvin. Borough Administrator?
Yep, I'm just getting through my hands. Looks like Lucinda Holt is up next. Please state your name and address.
Yes, good evening. My name is Lucinda Holt. I live at 501 Raritan Avenue. And I'm calling in to express my support for the rent control ordinance. You know, the state doesn't have specific rent control laws, and we've had lots of challenges in our building at 501 Raritan. The building was bought by a new landlord at the end of 2021, and I just received my new rental agreement from the landlord, and he's proposing a 52% increase on my monthly rent, which is shocking. So I'm being asked to pay considerably more than I've been paying. I've lived here in this building for 16 years, and I've reached out to him to negotiate, and that's been very challenging since there is no law, state, municipal, nothing for me to kind of fall back on. So this is an exorbitant increase, and I know that I'm not the only one who's experiencing this. And I know that there are people who are much more vulnerable than I am, who are going through the same thing. So this ordinance needs to pass as soon as possible. And I get that landlords need to make money, but if they are refusing to make incremental increases, because I recognize the rents in the area have increased considerably over the last few years for many reasons that I'm sure many of us are aware of. But making these increases in one year, going from one lease agreement to a new one with a 52% increase is just outrageous. And this has happened to every single other person in my building, and I think some of them are on this call, so I'm hoping they'll be able to speak as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucinda.
Moment, Mayor. Looks like Will Payne is up next.
Thank you very much. My name is Will Payne. I live at 115 Lincoln Avenue here in town. And I just wanted to concur with the very eloquent statements and passionate statements of the last two people to speak and just say that I support the rent control. I'm not a renter myself in Highland Park, but I was for many years in places with strong rent control. It wasn't always enough. Sometimes landlords had other tricks up their sleeves, but I really benefited from that in the past. And I think renters today need that kind of safety and assurance to be able to stay in their community. I also am very much in favor of the permanent pedestrianization of South Third, having arrived in Highland Park during the pandemic and seeing what kind of great use that space could get and does get and just the kind of extreme pedestrian and bike friendliness of this town while yet being kind of trapped in between places. People are going very quickly with cars and trucks and Amazon delivery vans. So I'm all for anything that gives us more space as a community to kind of be safe and, you know, exercise our ability to gather. So I just wanted to support that, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
The next attendee that I'd like to call on is a phone number ending in 0204. If you could tell us your name and address, please. Hello?
I'm sorry, did you say 0204?
Sure did.
All right, yeah, Judy Yang, 14 North Second Avenue. I just want to comment on this Third Avenue closing for the pedestrian mall, whatever it is. Call it. That's always a nice-to-have, it's not need-to-have item. Terms of design, how the town was designed years ago, and these streets were put in place years ago when there were a lot less cars on the road. Now you have more cars and you want to shut off a street. Kind of doesn't make sense to me why you want to do that. Only so many accesses to Route 27. You have Fourth Avenue, you've got no left-hand turn. All these things that cut off, want to cut off your access to a main state highway. Like I said, the road to the town and the roads were designed years ago when there were less cars. Now you have more cars. These are accesses. Accesses, perhaps you want to say, for emergency and whatever, and now you want to shut them off. You need to find somewhere else to put the nice-to-have pedestrian mall. It's a nice-to-have item, not a need-to-have item, you know? And, like I said, those roads are designed for purpose. Move traffic and to give us access to Route 27. But that's how, you know, like I said, as an engineer, that's how I see it. These things should be in place, not shutting it down because you can make that argument then for every street in town. Close that street. Oh, that's better for that, too. Again, it doesn't make it unique because you can make that argument for every street then. Oh, we should close that down, be nicer. Oh, we can close that one down, be nicer. Again, you have to look at the logic and the design of the town years ago that the engineers, architects, whoever did the town and made the roadways did years ago. I don't think you want to take stuff away like that. I think you could find somewhere else great. You've got very talented people in this town that can find somewhere else to place this pedestrian nice-to-have mall. Great thing, great town. But not something that I think is a good thing to do, to shut down accesses to Route 27. Just makes a pain in the neck for everybody. Want to go down the street, traffic's backed up. Emergency with this car accident. No, and someone says, like, I got turned off here. Now you got to go this way. Just things that complicate things. I see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like David Hughes is up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, David Hughes, 330 South Third Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'd like to disagree as strongly as possible with the last speaker regarding the pedestrian mall. The reason we need a pedestrian mall is in fact exactly what she stated. We have more cars on the road than we did in 1950. So because we have more cars on the road, our streets are less safe for pedestrians, bicyclists, pets, children, and anything not in a car. And so there we need protections, and we need a pedestrian space protected from cars where one can play, where one can drink a coffee, where one can walk around. So I love this proposal for the pedestrian mall. The only thing I want to quibble with is the word closure. This is not closing the street. This is opening the street to human beings. So I want to agree with Alvin Chin there, who lives closer. We're both on the same street. He lives a lot closer than I do, that this is going to be wonderful. This is going to be a space where the entire neighborhood can gather and can enjoy fresh air, safety, less noise. I would be thrilled to live right next to this place, as he does. And finally, the inconvenience of, if you choose to, the convenience, if you choose to walk or bicycle, is very high of this pedestrian mall. The inconvenience, if you choose to drive, seems to be trivial. What is it? You might have to drive 100 meters around the block, and there are some people complaining about that as if they have a right to drive through any space they want to. And most people drive around the block anyway in an effort to avoid, in an effort to bypass Raritan Avenue and take Montgomery or Benner instead. So please pedestrianize that space right away. There are no better spaces that are accessible and affordable, and I applaud this council for putting the proposal forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
All right, Mayor, I just wanted to point out we have about five minutes left in the first session and another six hands up, but we do have the hearings and the second public comment, but I just wanted to.
Right, so anybody who does not have a chance to speak now that wanted to speak, please keep the second open public session in mind, or if you want to comment on any of the ordinances that we have time for public hearing on, please feel free to do that then.
All right, next up is Naomi Allen. Please state your name and address.
I think you need to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Naomi Allen, 426 Benner Street. I actually very much disagree with the last caller. Streets are designed for cars, not for pedestrians. The sidewalks on South Third are actually very generously portioned. There's plenty of room on the sidewalks, and there have been for tables. I've walked by, and there have been, you know, many of the tables being used, not all of them. And by closing off to cars, to vehicles on South Third, you're just pushing the cars elsewhere and making it more dense elsewhere and polluting more elsewhere, whether that be Benner or Montgomery or any of the other streets. There are enough traffic issues. There are enough accidents. Closing off, as the person who spoke a few people ago, there is a grid in place, and that grid is designed to maximize traffic flow or vehicles. And I just wanted to state that I really think it's a big, big mistake to make a pedestrian mall right in the middle of town, in the middle of a thoroughfare that allows for traffic flow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Looks like Meg Kavanaugh. You're up next. Please state your name and address.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I'm Meg Kavanaugh. I live at 521 South Third, also a South Third resident. I do want to speak in favor of the pedestrian mall issue. Just as someone who primarily gets around on foot and someone who lives in the neighborhood, I'm just really encouraged to see this investment in public space, especially right in the middle of an economic corridor like this, and the investment in pedestrian safety as well. Just in response to the FAQ that you provided for this session, it does seem consistent with your very long-running planning efforts. So I do see, you know, documentation and work that's gone into this decision. I don't find it to be hasty. I know that I benefited from this mall when it was in place in the past during the pandemic. Looking forward to doing some more now that I live in the neighborhood. And I also do want to speak quickly in favor of the rent control ordinance as a renter in Highland Park for three years running now, and that's not likely to change. That would be a major source of relief for me personally and many renters that I know in Highland Park as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got two minutes left, Mayor. Should I call on one more person?
Well, let's do the next person, and then anyone else who's been raising their hand, please wait till later in the council meeting. You will have a chance to speak, and Borough Administrator at the later sessions. Let's try to allow the folks who were waiting now to speak first.
We'll do my best. James Chalfont, you are our last caller for this session. If you'd please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm James Chalfont. I live at 12 North Eighth Avenue. I don't really need three minutes. I just wanted to speak in support of the pedestrian space on South Third. During the pandemic, it made the life of my wife, myself, and my children better basically every day, and I sincerely miss it and hope it comes back. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the second part of our meeting here. And as I mentioned before, folks who did not have a chance to speak now, there will be other opportunities later in the meeting. All right, moving on to ordinances requiring a second reading. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the ordinance amending Chapter 230 concerning deed-restricted control periods and mandatory set-aside requirements for affordable housing for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance concerning the Borough of Highland Park Affordable Housing Program and amending Chapters 86 and 230 of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park concerning deed-restricted control periods and mandatory set-aside requirements was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
All right. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. We can now move into our public hearing. Does anyone want to comment, anyone from the public want to comment on this ordinance?
All right, Mayor, we have 30 attendees, and I just remind those, I do see three hands raised, but this is to give comment on the Affordable Housing Control Period and Mandatory Set-Aside Ordinance. So just to limit your comments to that ordinance at this time. So Paul Sowers, you're up next. Looks like Paul is using an older version of Zoo. Paul, I'm giving you a heads up. Sometimes that, when I promote you to panelist, it will put your video on. So get ready. I will turn off your camera as quickly as I can, so I'm stalling by going slowly there. So I am. Paul, all right. I'm going to have to, let me stop your video. All right, Paul, do you want to give comment on this ordinance?
Actually, no, I wanted to talk about the pedestrian mall, but I didn't know whether I'd lose my place in the queue.
You will, so just make sure you raise your hand as quickly as you can when we get to that ordinance, okay?
I'll stay silent here.
Okay, I'm gonna, hold on, Mayor, give me one. This is a whole, I'm going to have to change role to attendee. Sorry for doing that, carrying that one. Okay. Ruthie Solomon, you are up next. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Ruth Solomon, South First Avenue, Highland Park. I wonder what, you know, one of the men said that, you know, we have no place to gather. It amazes me.
I'm sorry, Ruthie. This is, this, this comment session is only in relation to the ordinance requiring a second reading. So just keep your hand raised. Or do Borough Administrator, I don't know what the process is.
I guess I can probably handle it. It just, it gets confusing because we have another ordinance before we get back to that topic. So I would prefer, Ms. Solomon, if you could just raise your hand when we get to the ordinance concerning the pedestrian mall. Thank you.
Okay.
Hold on a moment. All right. Okay, Mayor, I do not see any other hands at this time.
Okay. Then may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes, I think this is a great step forward, making sure that all of our new developments have an appropriate amount of affordable housing. So I'm very much in favor of this. Thank you to everybody who worked on it. So full-hearted, yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Very good. Next, Clerk, could you please report on advertising the ordinance amending Chapter 328 Sewer and Water for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 328 Sewer and Water, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Thank you. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing on this?
All right, Mayor, I see thirty one attendees at this time. I do not see any hands raised with respect to this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Then may I have a, a motion to adopt or reject and advertise this ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, and as a, as the only member of the Public Works Committee here tonight, I just wanted to mention just a couple of things about this. This is, this is a tough one, I don't, nobody up here enjoys voting for this. But I would like to thank Terry Hovere for providing just some additional context. While, you know, the town owns its own water infrastructure system, the pipes in the ground, we purchase our water from Middlesex Water Company and the cost of maintaining our system continues to rise and the Highland Park Water Department must raise rates to keep up with increases in operating costs. That includes the twenty percent increase from our water supplier, Middlesex Water. And that was approved by the Board of Public Utilities last year. Annual rate increases from the Middlesex County Utilities Authority for sewage processing and emergency repairs, which nearly doubled in two thousand twenty one. So yes, thank you, it's necessary.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the ordinance establishing a pedestrian mall on South Third Avenue at Breriden Avenue for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance establishing a pedestrian mall on South Third Avenue pursuant to NJSA forty colon fifty six dash eighty five in the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
All right, is there any public hearing on this?
Uh, Mayor, I see.
Should we take up the ordinance?
Oh, sorry about that. Yes, yes. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, now, public hearing.
And so we have thirty two attendees at this moment and I see four hands raised, so I'll start at the top. Looks like Ethan Schoolman is up first. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Ethan Schoolman, I'm at four twenty three Harrison Avenue.
Hello.
Hi. Okay, well, just very briefly, you know, decisions about redevelopment and, and closing streets and changing habits are always really contentious. Now, there's a lot of strong feelings, but I just want to thank the council and the mayor for, you know, hopefully seeing this through. I think in terms of, you know, traffic safety, having a place to, you know, to gather social places near some of our busiest businesses or, or businesses we hope will be as busy as possible. Getting people riding their bikes and walking around. I think we don't need as much space for cars as we have, but it's very difficult, you know, to get, when people are used to cars, to sort of, you know, shifting that battleship, it takes a long time and a lot of work, doesn't happen overnight. But, you know, it does happen, but very, very slowly, and I think it happens with decisions like this. It's a tough decision, but I think that to, you know, create this, you know, hopefully a beautiful welcoming gathering place downtown will be a great start and show that Highland Park, just like we did with the plastic bag ban, right, which was not popular. And now it's a statewide law, right? And all these cities and towns following our lead. So I think we can do the same thing here, show cities and towns all across the state that it's possible to, you know, persuade people to, to not drive everywhere. And it would make the town beautiful and better for the earth too. So applause all around and let's do it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ethan. Okay, Terry?
Next is phone number ending four, 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 five. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. In reading some of the reports, I wonder where the engineer CMEs in the report, does it talk about the backups on North Second caused by traffic on twenty seven or on the bridge or New Brunswick? South Second must have the very same backups at times. People want to get to twenty seven. Trash pickups, we love them, guys, and recycling is greatly needed, but that slows the, the traffic, which Second was mentioned as another route to use. There's lots of congestion and pollution you're adding to. So it's not just South Third, it's not just driving everywhere, it's when you're coming home, you want to get across town, we can't make left, we can't make this and that. And Second, where is the safety in this report from CME or anywhere else? Where's to add a substation, the police fire substation on the north side? Fifth Avenue always has foot traffic before lunch, during lunch, after lunch, from the high school, going to the library, you know, barring a, a snowstorm. And when North Second is blocked, then you only have North Third and North Fourth available. Why not put something other than the police down at South Fifth to bring them somewhere as a substation, a branch on the north side? You've got delivery trucks on North Third and Fourth often, and you know that. I mean, and you can't make the left off Fourth. This is not sensible. There has to be somewhere else, whether it's Sunoco, which has a great deal of land on the hill behind it, and the mall behind it is also vacant, as Mary Botan pointed out. Top and shop's gonna be empty soon. You can grab the front of that maybe because that's gonna be a long time before that changes. We've heard it's not gonna be food. You're not thinking clearly, you're not thinking, you're focusing on twenty seven and you're not helping the citizens. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, we've got Paul Sowers. Again, I hope, I'm gonna have to promote you to be panelist, so I'm just gonna give you the same warning I did last time. So prepare your video, we'll flick her on for a moment until I have a chance to disable it. Or maybe it won't, maybe you turn off your video. Okay, very well, Paul, please state your name and address.
Paul Sowers, South Sixth and Mansfield Avenue. I, David Hughes stole my thunder, I basically wholeheartedly agree that we need pedestrian malls and I really was very grateful when the town created the mall on South Third during the pandemic. It was a great place and I think we need more great places. People don't go to, people want to stop and see things and talk to other people. We need community and it's very stressful if you're always go, go, go and you're not slowing down, you're not riding a bike, you're always looking out for things behind a dashboard while you're also looking at your phone at the same time. We gotta, you know, face facts. The single occupied vehicle is, is gonna be a dinosaur. Our, our children, our grandchildren are gonna say, what in the world were they thinking? And we can change Denmark, Netherlands, they had a huge traffic in the seventies. They decided wholeheartedly to go for pedestrians and now they have parking lots for five thousand bicycles. I'm saying it's a national problem, but it has a lot of local aspects, that's what I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Alrighty. And it looks like we have another hand raised, I'm, I'm assuming it's Mary Botan. Please state your name and address to confirm.
Yeah, hi, Mary Botan, seven oh nine. I just wanted to follow up on what the gentleman from the planning board mentioned about the fact that he said Jack Morris would never sell the Sunoco parcel to Highland Park. So I wanted to know, has Highland Park actually asked Jack Morris if we could purchase that spot? Because, again, to me, it's just sitting there, it would be a terrific location for our public square, for the pedestrian mall, for these gatherings, without causing the same amount of disruption, hopefully to, there's not as many businesses there on South Third, there's the churches there. There's a couple of houses, there's a vet's office, really not as many as on South Third, not even as many houses from Magnolia to Raritan. So, you know, have we actually asked him to purchase it? Or has he actually told us he never would sell us that parcel?
So I'm not sure how to answer them, looking at our borough attorney. Ed, would you like to address this?
Madam Mayor, we, we could indicate that in other contexts, dealing with Mr. Morris on other properties in town, there have been discussions about the borough acquiring the Sunoco property. I must say, not recently, but there have been discussions and we never received a positive response.
Okay, thank you.
Would you, would you be willing to ask again, since it's been a while and we have, we would be having money coming in from the sale of Track C?
Again, I, I would defer to our attorney.
And Mayor, we, we could always ask again, there'd be no harm in doing that, we haven't discussed it in a while. So if that was the pleasure of the governing body, we could certainly reach out.
I, I'm going to take that under advisement, Mary, I just, we'll have to discuss this with the attorney and the other council members.
Yeah, thank you so much, I really think it would be worthwhile. And then the other thing, just real quick, I hope that going forward, we'll do the hybrid meetings for keep the Zoom, so many participants can continue. Oh, okay, sorry, got carried away, Terry.
Participation.
Oh, yes, okay, got carried away. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Administrator, are there any other?
I do see a hand raised, uh, looks like Harold Sakowitz. And just a reminder, we still are talking about the ordinance regarding establishing the pedestrian mall. Please state your name and address to confirm.
Marion Sakowitz, six seventeen South Fifth Avenue. Okay, so I went to a number of meetings where they discussed the town square and I'm not opposed to the concept of the town square. However, I'm not sure that the benefit we're getting from this particular location is worth the possible disruption. So I haven't seen evidence to show how this particular parcel can serve for things like the farmer's market and some of the other things that are successful on the current farmer's market site. And I'm worried about, and there's also been no discussion of the downsides of this particular location. Okay, we're losing some parking spaces, probably, I don't know, twelve to fourteen, plus the traffic flow. Now, some of these things, maybe by themselves, won't be that disruptive. But if we're also putting in all those extra people, if we're taking away a lot of other parking, like the current parking at the current farmer's marketplace, and actually, when the farmer's market is operating, I'm seeing people park at that on South Second where, next to Jack Morris's property. So there are a lot of things that are gonna be happening, so this site needs to be, so we need to understand how traffic is gonna flow, where parking is going to work, how the farmer's market's gonna fit into this space. So at this point, I'm not convinced that the benefit that the borough is getting from this site is worth the possible disruptions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm working my way through, Mayor, I, I didn't, there we go. Looks like Erin Kelly is up next. Erin?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'm a longtime resident of Highland Park, I live at thirty one South Third and volunteer with the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee. I moved to this block of South Third just in time to enjoy the pandemic era pedestrian mall. So I'm speaking out in favor of re-implementing it. I'd like to remind the council that, right, roads are for people first and foremost. The notion that only cars belong on roads is a recent one in history and one that has made our streets less safe and much less pleasant to be on. I've been able to witness from my front porch the tremendous pedestrian activity on this block. Folks meeting with friends for tea or coffee, kids at daycares on our block going on walking outings to look at our gorgeous street trees and students on their way to and from school. I think the best way to ensure our public spaces are well utilized and our businesses enjoy walk-in patronage is to implement traffic calming measures like the proposed pedestrian mall. I therefore commend the council for this proposal and encourage them to adopt it. I also just, I mean, I guess you already talked about it, but I support the rent control plan and the affordable housing set asides.
Thank you. Okay, Borough Administrator?
I see a hand up, it looks like it's Daniel Stern Cardinal. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, two twenty one Harper Street. Just calling in favor of opening the South Third Pedestrian Plaza. As David Hughes says, I also want to emphasize we're opening South Third to all uses, so it's a permanent pedestrian plaza. That's going to improve safety and it's also going to improve access to twenty seven by providing an avenue of access to something other than cars. A healthy town and a vibrant downtown is gonna have spaces specifically for people on foot, for people on bikes and also for cars. It's not just going to have spaces for cars. So this is exactly the kind of thing we should be doing. And as someone who lives just a few blocks from there, I'm so looking forward to having that space available again for, for all sorts of uses, not just as a, a road for cars, of which we have many in the town that go straight through from north side to south side, where South Third actually stops on the north side. It doesn't go all the way through to the edge of town by the railroad tracks. So if we're going to repurpose a road to some other use, South Third is the ideal street to do it because it's not cutting straight across. So again, I'm very much in favor of reopening the South Third Pedestrian Plaza, I can't wait to have that space back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Borough Administrator?
I see two hands up. Sasha Rudy, you're next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sasha Rudy, two forty seven Cleveland Avenue. Can you hear me? Yes. Yes. Okay. I wanted to express approval for opening of South Third. I moved here from Texas in the middle of the pandemic. I decided I was done and just hopped on a plane, quarantined and said, you know, I want to live away from a car dependent town. You know, the roads in that town were curvilinear and you couldn't go many places. And, and I just fell in love with the downtown South Third closure. I ended up staying at an Airbnb there and I could just walk outside and sit on the benches and meet people, make friends. You know, I signed my loan closing papers from my old house in Texas on those benches on South Third and I think it's just a great place for everything. I was devastated when it was closed this past spring and I can't wait for it to be open again. Thank you.
Thank you, Sasha.
Sorry, the hands are bouncing around on the mayor. It looks like Harold Sakowitz and or Marion Sakowitz is up next.
Hey, this time it's Harold.
Ah. I was, I don't.
Six seventeen South Fifth Avenue. Okay, I want to be a little more specific about what Marion was saying. I mean, there, I have no idea whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. I mean, it's certainly a good idea to have some space for us, but you really have to make sure that you're thinking of everything. A lot of people seem to think that that closing Third Avenue is gonna eliminate a whole bunch of cars and people are gonna stop driving and they'll suddenly be using bicycles. Okay, so certainly that's not going to happen. The cars are going to move on to other streets. Those streets will be more congested. And so I, I don't know about that. I also wonder, when, when we did this last year and it was closed and it was, it was actually a nice thing for a lot of people, but you have to admit that it got modest use. It's nothing like what it will be, for example, when the farmer's market's open. When the farmer's market's open, there are gonna be tons and tons of people, lots of cars. When the farmer's market's open, there are going to be tons and tons of people, lots of cars. Where are they going? Are they going to be allowed to use Third Avenue? The part of Third Avenue that is not closed. Are those cars going to be able to go there? Or will parking be residence-only on that street? I mean, you're going to have to think about where all these things are going to go. The people on Third who think it's a great idea because there's less pollution, fewer cars, that's when it's only getting modest use. If it gets high use, the question is, to me, what's going to happen? Thanks.
Thank you, Harold.
Phone number ending four, 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 five is up next. I believe that's Lois Leving. Please state your name and address to confirm.
Hi, it is Lois at North Second Avenue. I agree, we need a mall. We need a safe, logical mall. But I didn't hear anything about litter and noise, lots of noise. The farm market used to have a barbecue that the smoke would go through everywhere. Thrift shop downstairs, every corner of the area. Okay, that person is, so, so far has not returned. Now, Metatchen is a mile larger than this town. They had great plans to open, I believe it was Center Street. It did not happen because the people were against it. Okay, so you probably have fifty-fifty here and maybe the same with the council. But you are not thinking about the congestion and the problems in turning. And I, I wish you could think a little bit longer, have a pedestrian mall. Is South Third really the best place? What happens when an ambulance has to come to the daycare? So yes, they can get in, they can turn, they can stop and, and to the, the children there, Yellow Brick Road. What happens when they have to leave? Or fire truck? They have to, okay, let them back up. Fire truck can back out because they've completed their job, God forbid that happens. But an ambulance has to do a quick turn, and yes, what if cars are parked there? And now has to go maybe to Third or to Second. Hopefully, it's not in the morning when the trash and recycling is picked up or afternoon. You've got problems coming, looking at you. You need a larger place. Why are you going smaller? Maybe, maybe Stop and Shop. Has there been any comment about talking to Stop and Shop owners in Spokane? Thank you.
Thank you, Lois.
Next up is, it looks like Dan Stern Cardinal. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, two twenty-one Harper Street. I'm sorry, I'm sure you want to wrap this up. But I, another commenter reminded me of something I meant to mention a few minutes ago, and it's the concept of induced demand. This is the idea that if you build more space for cars, that leads to more car usage. And less space for cars leads to less car use. This is why widening a highway actually makes traffic worse, not better, paradoxically. And this is a real thing. It's well documented. So repurposing spaces dedicated to cars for other uses actually will reduce car use. There's lots of data supporting this idea. So I just wanted to add that to my previous comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
I didn't mean to do what I just did. Oh, boy. I thought I accidentally promoted someone to panelists, but maybe I didn't. Um, maybe that person just lowered their hand. Um, let me just, I, I saw a name with a hand, but then it's gone now. All right, Mayor, I don't see any hands raised at this point. Oh, I do not, no. I'm going to take a breath. Want to raise your hand?
Okay. I have a question after everyone spoke.
Okay, it looks like Ruthie Solomon, you have your hands raised. Please state your name and address.
Okay, Ruth Solomon, South First Avenue, seven oh four. I just wondered, the Sunoco station is a real eyesore. It's been like that a long time. How long can a landlord, you know, there's always condemnation, not that I'm suggesting that. I'm just asking, you know, we really could use that. It would be a much better alternative. And I just wondered, you know, how many years has it been? It seems like it's endless. And if they're not going to do something with it, maybe we should do something with it.
So yes, it does seem endless, that South Second Avenue-Sunoco situation. Borough Attorney, do you want to address that at all?
No.
How long can they really keep it like that, you know?
Ruthie, there's, there's really no statute of limitations or there's no number of years. They, they are savvy enough to know that they do police the property. The old dispensers are boxed up. I mean, it's terrible. It's a, it's a well-underutilized property.
Oh, yeah.
But it's, but it's not deteriorated to the point where the Borough, in our opinion legally, could do something to force them to sell the property or do something with it. And, and the Borough does not usually pursue. In fact, our redevelopment plan does not call for condemnation. So that would be an extremely, in this case, an extremely expensive option.
Maybe worth one more conversation with them.
All right. Hold on. Okay, Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised at this time.
All right, Councilman Hirsch, you had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just, to the mayor, I, I was hoping, Terry, could, could you just describe kind of exactly what it is that we're voting on tonight? I know there's a lot of big-picture discussions and everyone's feedback is really, really, really important. But procedurally, can, maybe it just would be helpful to describe what it is that we're voting on.
Mayor, would you like me to do that?
If you'd like.
Sure. It's essentially, it's an ordinance to establish what unfortunately is called a pedestrian mall. It wasn't our, our preferred language, but there's a statute that allows municipalities to seek DOT approval for doing what we propose to do here on, on South Third. It sounds like most of the people who've been calling in get a sense for the footprint of what we're looking to do. And it is a component of our kind of application to the state DOT. Because in addition to this ordinance, which we were instructed we would need to do if we wanted to pursue this, by the, the DOT were the ones who had instructed us about that. In addition to that, we have to do what's called a street intersection permit, which involves another round of much more detailed engineering plans and so forth that our consultants, CME and Associates, are in the process of finalizing and working on. And we hope to submit later this month. So both this ordinance is under the kind of, will be reviewed by the DOT. And they have requested that this ordinance be passed as part of our package. And they, they are very aware of this initiative and our, and our intentions. And they're, they're trying to guide us through this process, which they admittedly don't do very often. And the, in addition, we're pursuing this street intersection permit at the same time. Once that's, let's assume a favorable outcome, which in our, in this case would be, in terms of where the governing body is, would be affirmative approval from the DOT, we would then engage in the landscape design process that would fully basically map out and plan and how we accommodate the farmer's market adequately and some of the concerns that we've heard voiced here and elsewhere. And what are, you know, you know, there's probably some cool things that we don't even know what we might be able to achieve over there. And we would be engaging all the right stakeholders. So this is kind of one slice of the process, and it's an essential one because they're not going to, they're not going to look at our intersection permit, basically, until we, they know the governing bodies behind this effort. So this is that affirmative action step, saying, yes, this is something we want. And, and then we'll be following through on the permit. There'll probably be some back and forth on the permit. There's lots of plans and designs and schemes in terms of just how we close the road and what, what has to happen to the intersection there. They may have questions. We may have to modify some of those plans. So there are several steps in the way and we would actually have to construct the changes to the intersection in accordance with whatever the permit says.
So if I could.
Along the way.
If I.
Sorry if I went too long.
So if I could summarize, Matt, this is step number one with the DOT. They want to see that the Borough Council.
Yeah, I know what it is.
Okay.
For the public.
Okay.
So anyway, that was my, probably longer than, and I will, I will, you know, and anybody who hasn't had a chance to look at the FAQ that we did put out yesterday, it does, I tried to, you know, we try to map that out in the FAQ. So feel free to refer to that. It's up on the homepage of the website right now.
Councilwoman Foster, do you have your hand raised?
I just wanted to say that person that got disconnected before, Sandy Gomez, is back.
Oh, thank you for pointing that out.
That was the person.
Right. Yeah, we'll go back out of order, just so Sandy has a chance to.
She was there and then she wasn't there, and I think I might have been the culprit. I apologize. Sandy, could you please state your name and address for the record? Sorry about that. Sandy Gomez? Okay, this is your opportunity to speak on the pedestrian mall ordinance?
Right. No, not the pedestrian. I'm, I'm actually just, you were getting what, listening to Hall, my neighbor.
If you don't mind, we're going to have a second public comment section. More than welcome to come back during that.
I've just been waiting so long. Yeah, okay.
I apologize. Yeah, when you don't get enough protection. But yeah, we just got it. We're almost done with this part.
Okay.
Alrighty, sorry about that. Well, at least I feel better knowing we didn't totally lose her.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Foster?
I just want to say that I'm glad that we're having this very spirited discussion. And as with everything in town, we always have discussion before we make decisions. And in my time being here, we had the same conversation that we had regarding when we wanted us to close, where we now have the, the Welcome It's Pavilion. When we wanted us to close that Cut Street because we wanted us to place the farmer's market in, we had the same type of spirited discussion about not closing that street and not having a farmer's market there. And I, I was there for that. So Highland Park is truly a place where everyone's opinion is heard. And I was happy to listen to everyone, but with that said, we have seen how, what it benefits. The farmer's market has been to our town, how much it's welcomed and is appreciated, the closing of the area kept a lot of residents safe. And with that, I'm going to follow through and say, yes, we should move ahead with the proposal to go to the DOT to see if there's a possibility that we can create more space in our town, more of a gathering.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes, this is an exciting project. I'm really excited to be opening a public plaza on South Third. As been said, this has been a long time coming and, and it is still at the first step. So I, I wholeheartedly believe this is the right path for, for Highland Park. I appreciate everyone who came out tonight, both for and against. As, as Councilwoman Foster said, we do have spirited debates in Highland Park. But I very much am in favor of, of this, and I vote yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
I just really wanted to thank everybody for coming out too. And, you know, I've been hearing from folks who are supportive of this and also opposed and have concerns. And, and there have been their, their interest in this project. I have to remember the principles that we have, you know, established in the Bike and Pedestrian Plan and in the redevelopment plan, as well as some of the principles that I think we all bring to the table from our, from our, from, from our worldview. We lack a downtown community square. We, we have, we have where the farmer's market is now, what I, what I endearingly called Market Square. It's not a planned space, but it is working and it is functional and it is successful. And all of the programming that has kept Highland Park in operation throughout the pandemic and has grown since then exists there, whether it's the raccontour, the Taco Time machine, or of course, the farmer's market, the night owl market, the, the tree lighting, the menorah lighting, you know, it's, it is a community gathering spot. What excites me here is the fact that we have an opportunity to create a planned public square. Not necessarily as an alternative. It could be viewed as one. But I think that this is really an opportunity to address a lot of the needs that have arisen in Highland Park before and particularly after, and particularly during and since pandemic. When I think about who we represent here, obviously, we represent the entire town. When I think about the kids who congregated there when, when, when the street was open to pedestrians, when I think about the seniors who were able to get out and actually enjoy the outdoors when the street was open to pedestrians. When I think about a wedding that took place there, when the street was open to pedestrians. And of course, you heard Ms. Rudy talk about how she signed her, her mortgage documents to become a Highland Parker, her lease to become a Highland Parker, which is just a wonderful story. And thank you for sharing that. There was a lot of really heartfelt commentary here. I am confident through the FAQ and through some of the concerns that I raised and also through Ms. Hope's explanation. Once again, thank you, Terry. We did this at the last meeting, about kind of where this fits into the larger piece. There are so many components going on, and I understand that the one thing that's really missing from all of this, and I vote yes, by the way, sorry. The one thing that is missing from all of this is an essential community development aspect. And I think that's where a lot of the public is feeling that things are happening at different paces and different rates. And it's important for the council to kind of present those things holistically, present them with all the work that we've done, whether it's safe routes to school, whether it's the Bike and Ped Plan, whether it's the Master Plan. So much time and volunteering effort went into, then staff effort went into these, went into these projects. And they are aggregating years of feedback. It's hard to just illustrate that, you know, when we're looking at the kind of granular elements of what we're doing, of what we're doing kind of one at a time. You know, e-scooters is part of it, creating bike corrals is part of it, creating bike lanes, putting in more stop signs, improving our crosswalks. The art on the, you know, that, that Councilman Hale pointed to. All of that is to calm traffic, make things more favorable for cyclists and pedestrians while improving our roads. You may have noticed that the roads were just paved. So look, Highland Park has the best roads in New Jersey right now because of a commitment to just general traffic, traffic pedestrian and cycling mobility. So this is an important piece. I am, I am confident that any additional concerns will be addressed as this moves forward. As Terry pointed out, this is an exhaustive process, and thank you for getting the ball rolling. Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes. So I want to, I want to thank the council members for their yes votes on this, this project. What I would add to everything that Councilman Hirsch said was, the thought process for public squares and public spaces began with charrettes that we held in town in two thousand, before I was on council, but Councilwoman Foster was probably on council at the time. And there were hundreds of people who showed up for that. We then had our Borough Planner come and conduct some, some mini-type charrettes at, forget the, oh, at the REC Center, the, the Community Center. And there, we had, again, hundreds of people come to give their point of view on what they wanted. And public space was a big part of it. So council members, thank you for your yes votes. I think we will be giving most of our residents what they have been asking for. Okay, moving on. Ordinances that require a first reading. Clerk, could you please report on introduction of an ordinance amending the code of Borough of Highland Park concerning motor vehicle parking regulations for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter Seven of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park concerning motor vehicle parking regulations has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes. Okay, and I would just like to um, make sure that the borough clerk um, will um, note in the uh, remarks of this meeting that Council, Council President Phil George did join us.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I note, um, I had a, my hard drive crashed last week. I had like a hard drive and uh, battery replaced and for whatever the reason, I cannot get the video working, although I do have the Zoom meeting.
Well, I'm glad you're here. Okay, um, moving on to the consent agenda, may I have a motion to adopt or, I'm sorry?
I had my little item on this one.
Oh, oh, yes.
Uh, very minor. Uh, there was an, uh, we jumped the gun a little on the uh, um, salary resolution. Uh, there was a, a, a police officer listed. While we, we are in, we're in discussions about that, it's premature to put him on the uh, resolution at this time. So um, I ask that you strike that for the purpose of your vote on, but everything else on the resolution is fine, just.
So, so you are asking us to strike 14A?
Not the whole reso, just the police officer from the resolution.
Okay, can I, uh, Borough Attorney, do I need a motion um, from the council to strike uh, one personnel uh, person from this?
No matter, Mary, when you vote on the consent agenda, you could indicate that uh, for this item uh, N22 to 36, the reference to the police officer uh, be deleted and then you could adopt it that way.
Okay, thank you for that guidance.
I apologize for the error. Sorry about that.
All right, then, referring to the consent agenda. Um, can I have a motion to accept 14A through 14F with the caveat that on 14A, which is 1022 to 36, we will be removing the police officer from this resolution?
They're moved.
Do I have a? Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, and I just wanted to point out um, item 1022 to 37 uh, that authorizes this submission of an arts grant application to Middlesex County. Uh, the Division of Folk Life and Cultural Heritage Arts Institute County Project Support. This is $5,000 uh, for next year's Park Stock Outdoor Summer Concert Series. Um, we are really excited to grow this program. It was a very successful this year and we see that uh, you know, this is a, a popular program. I just say again, I wanted to thank the mayor, uh, uh, Kim McGraw, REC, uh, and then everybody who, uh, who, who, uh, Sheila Shukla, Gary Kaplan, everybody who helped with this thing together. Uh, it's going to get better. All right, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay. I am appointing the following people um, to the following committees. Karen Raib to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. Haley Hassan to the Municipal Alliance. And Hayden Hassan to the Municipal Alliance. May I have a motion to confirm?
They're moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster? Councilwoman Foster?
There she is.
I'm sorry, yes. My apologies.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on at this point to the second public participation session. Um, each speaker has three minutes but may comment on any topic. The borough clerk will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by 9:00 PM.
Mayor, I'm gonna be off screen for just a few minutes.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Um, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand button in the application. Please unmute yourself by pressing star six. The borough administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us the, your first and last name as well as your complete address. Again, if you would like to uh, speak about a topic on or off the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
Uh, Mayor, it looks like we have 21 attendees at this time. Um, and I do see a hand going up. Uh, Dan Stern Cardinal, please just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal. Just wanted to very briefly say thank you for approving the South Third ordinance. Uh, looking forward to having that space and uh, just happy to see that application process moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Looks like Ethan Schoolman, you're up again. Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Ethan Schoolman again, 423 Harrison Avenue. And like Dan, I just want to thank the council and the mayor uh, for, I think, a really great vote. Nice to see unanimous vote and I think a lot of hard work um, uh, putting the, 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 the pedestrian plaza um, proposal forward. It's gonna be a long haul from here too, but I think it's really worth it. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of amazing to be, I guess I would call myself an environmentalist, but you know, to see the sort of, I mean, mobility revolution like taking hold. I mean, you know, people, these electric bikes and scooters uh, are, are just amazing. I mean, it's just changing everything. And I think that we're really lucky to live in a town where any kid except for the, except for minority that, you know, that um, lives, lives um, you know, uh, uh, up river, but, but most kids in town can walk to school if they want. I mean, think about that. And then, you know, there, there's, you can count on one hand uh, towns that are like that, where, where, if you want to, you have the option to walk or bike to school. That is so rare that we just are in a town that's like that. And it's great for um, for health, you know, getting fresh air in the morning, getting a little bit of exercise, see your friends and neighbors, get out of your cars. And I think it's wonderful that we're doing all that we can to uh, encourage the town to embrace that identity. Um, and I look forward to seeing uh, what more happens. So thank you again.
Thank you, Ethan. Borough Administrator, do we have any other hands?
I don't see any other hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Um, then at this point, I'll ask the council, I'm sorry, somebody?
Ma- Mayor, it's Matt, it's Matt Hirsch. I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, I just wanted to add something to, to, to what Mr. Schoolman uh, uh, just mentioned. Um, in addition to everything that's going on locally, uh, we are also um, uh, Highland Park is represented at the uh, Middlesex County Vision Zero Partnership. Uh, and um, the county is also uh, undergoing its own uh, long-term um, uh, planning, well, yeah, the, short and long-term uh, uh, traffic and, and uh, uh, cycling and pedestrian safety initiatives of its own, uh, which we own in Highland Park would affect uh, roads like River Road and Bridge Avenue. So uh, there are a lot of moving parts going on here and uh, uh, removing uh, I think cars from the road, you know, looking to alternate modes of transportation as we kind of evolve uh, is also um, uh, something that we can hopefully anticipate as well because there will always be traffic from Route 18 to Route 287. That is a, you know, that, and, and, and that's not going away and it's not because of, you know, traffic in Highland Park. Uh, it's not, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's always gonna be beholden to those stressors. Uh, you know, that exist in our region. So we have to do what we can. Uh, so I appreciate um, Mr. Schoolman's input and also the county understands that as well. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, so council members, uh, before we go into our work, our rep work session, I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute recess and rejoin each other here on um, on this call. See you all in five minutes.
Do we have to? Motion?
Come back.
All right, it has been five minutes, Mayor. Just a good timing.
Okay, so we have Phil, Stephanie, Matt and Matt. So um, you're saying it's been five minutes, Borough Administrator? Okay. So let's get back to the work session item.
Okay.
Um, and so we have one item on the work session for this evening. Um, I just want to um, let you know that it has been way too long since we've looked at um, the um, issue of uh, rent control here in Highland Park. Um, I've received several phone calls and have been stopped and stop and shop pretty often by residents with concerns about this. And so uh, we've taken a look at the um, current um, rent control um, here in Highland Park and have recommendations for some changes. Um, Terry, do you want to take us through all of this?
Sure, I'm happy to. And Ed's here and he's also been working on that uh, with me, but I, and I, we did distribute to council a memo that Ed drafted that kind of walks through some of the key provisions that I think will also help kind of the public who are interested in this topic, who spoke and previously understand kind of the approach we're taking. Uh, but yeah, we do have a rent leveling ordinance, I believe is what it's called, and it's pretty much inapplicable to most renters in town based on kind of some age and some of the provision in there. So you are absolutely correct, Mayor. It's, it's time if we want it to be effective. Uh, so in thinking about how to establish this ordinance, we, we kind of had some specific areas where we needed to focus in terms of policy direction, applicability, um, meaning which properties would this ordinance apply to? Uh, and what, after discussions with uh, the admin committee plus uh, Matt Hirsch, uh, uh, where the, the group landed and where the memo kind of lands is the ordinance would apply to all properties in the borough, uh, from one families to, you know, garden apartment complexes. So uh, any rental properties would be uh, subject to the rent control ordinance. So uh, which is different than what our current ordinance provides. I believe it's three families and up. Uh, registration, uh, the original, the old ordinance had a very kind of uh, elaborate registration process. Uh, and we're suggesting we do have a one-time registration and there is an obligation to keep contact information current, but we're not gonna be trying to update our registration forms every um, with this proposal. Nothing's set in stone at this point, but the proposal that being kind of bandied about at this point would be to keep it a pretty simple and straightforward registration process. Process in part because we have limited staff and we feel like our energies, we better spend uh, on implementation of the ordinance and other areas of enforcement. Um, and do you want to add anything to the registration? I just, I, it's not a piece that I focus on too much. Um, in terms of a rent control board, um, the current ordinance provides for one and the recommendation is to have a rent control board, a three-person board represented by a control board, a three-person board represented by a landlord, a tenant, and a not a person who is neither a landlord or a tenant, staffed by myself or designation, designated me. And it would be a very simple mandate, which would be to certify the annual rate increase, which we'll talk about in a minute, as well as to hear and decide hardship appeals that may emerge. I believe that's something, you know, that we have to do, and the admin committee, legally, we need to have a hardship appeal process, and that the admin committee thought a board of constituent members would be the best way to approach that. The and I'll go through them all, we can then talk about it. In terms of establishing the annual rent increase, the formula that's being proposed would be tied to the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, with a caveat that the annual increase would be either that CPI calculation or 5%, so basically a 5% cap, whichever is less. So that's going to vary from year to year, just depending on the Consumer Price Index. So that's what's being proposed. Vacancy decontrol, and what that means is when a tenant leaves an apartment, typically what that would mean is that that the unit is now decontrolled and the landlord could adjust the rents according to market values. We there was a concern raised that we don't want a situation where if someone's in a month-to-month lease, because the, you know, just the annual lease has lapsed, that that somehow that would trigger decontrol for that tenant. So if it's the same tenant, it goes month to month, they establish a new annual lease, the the rent control provisions still apply. So that's some language we were proposing would be included to address that concern that that could be kind of a tactic for decontrolling apartments with the same tenant and occupants. Non-waiver ability clause basically saying there would be a provision in the ordinance where landlords couldn't try to get tenants to waive the rent control rights. That's just they're not going to be allowed to do that. Education and enforcement, we're suggesting a provision in the ordinance that requires landlords to disclose to their tenants that there we do in fact have rent control and provides for a method of publication of that in the property somewhere. So we're working through the specific language, but we thought it was important that people especially know their rights. I will add, I do think that the landlords will need some education on this, too, especially the smaller ones that may not be as in tune with ordinances, and we're thinking about working, are we working the code enforcement about how we can make sure we notify the landlords we do know about of this ordinance if it was to go forward. And lastly, enforcement, we would have, make it clear that there if we find or that there is a violation of this ordinance, that there are mechanisms to assess penalties and 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 address the matter. So those are the kind of, it kind of boils down to those are the core components. And the Ed has already taken a first crack at a draft ordinance. We we didn't, we've amended some things since the admin committee met that are reflected in this memo. But before we want to work further on the ordinance, we thought it would be great to hear from the rest of the council to make sure there aren't any other considerations that need to be addressed or clarified.
So what I do want to add to what Terry presented is given that we're 40% rentals here in Highland Park, it's extremely important that we pay more attention to this. Because in the past, if you look at the current ordinance, you'll you'll see that the potential increases in rent were were higher. And the individual so and it only really referred to not multifamily dwellings, but apartment complexes, et cetera. And we do have so many houses in Highland Park that are single-family rentals that were not included in this in the past. So with that being said, okay, I think Matt Hale, I think you have your hand up, and then Matt Hirsch.
Mayor, so a couple of questions. In terms of penalties for violation of this is I mean, obviously, the penalties for for violating this need to be strong enough that there'll be a deterrent. So is is there any guidance that Ed you can give us or any other other places that have adopted this so that we have a sense of what the penalties will be for landlords that don't abide by this? What 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 capacity do we have for that?
Well, the the ordinances that we reviewed, starting with the ones closest to the borough and then moving out from there, most of the ordinances refer to the general penalty provisions in the code. And in your case, that would allow a fine up to $2,000 on each violation. And it can be a continuing violation if a landlord was to repeatedly violate and increase the rents when they weren't supposed to be increased to a certain level and so on, and that could progressively go up. So this the ordinance that we drafted or suggested is similar to that, and that is that we point everybody to section 117 of the code, which gives the municipal magistrate discretion to levy a fine up to $2,000 per violation.
Okay, and is is there any provision or any possibility that this can be retroactive? Like, let's say, for example, that that a landlord raises the rent in in January, the tenant doesn't find out about it about the rent control ordinance until October. They've been struggling to pay the rent through October. Can it be retroactive, or is there is it a one-time penalty, or is there any way to go back and say you you violated this a long time ago, and and there needs to be some redress for that?
It would be retroactive in the sense that when the violation occurs, not when the tenant realizes it, would be the starting date for the penalty, but would be in that respect, respect retroactive.
Okay. Is there any, has there been any additional discussion about? It's a related issue. It's not exactly the same issue, but a related issue about vacancy taxes on on businesses, or is that a separate issue that we had to tackle in a different way?
We've discussed that in the past. And that's something that the council in the past did not want to proceed with, but it is certainly something that I'm open to putting back on the agenda.
But that's a different ordinance, Matt, not not.
So it's not worth doing this as a package or anything like that.
Right, no.
No, you would do it separately.
I'd like to pursue that if we can as well. So I think that's something we ought to seriously consider.
I already lobbed that over to Ed. So, you know, after the economic committee meeting.
Good.
This council supports it now.
Yeah, pretty much. But let's let's do it in step. You know, I just, I I I will just quickly say that I I think we're in desperate need of this. I think that that some of the stories that we've heard, you know, Lucinda Holt, I think is still here. She she certainly told us about some of the things that are going on at their space, and it's it's those increases are just unconscionable. And so I I certainly think this is a something we all ought to support and something we can move forward with. So that's all.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch, you had your hand up before.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. You know that rule, wait, why am I talking? I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait. I'll let Phil.
I see Phil's hands up.
Phil probably has a technical question, so I don't want to just go on like I do. Okay.
Okay, so where are you seeing Phil's hand?
I see it on my screen. You must have a different view because he doesn't have his camera.
Oh, okay.
You look at panelists, you can see his hands.
Okay, all right, Phil. Did you have?
Thanks, as I say, I I cannot get my video working saving my life tonight. Just I I want to thank Matt, he and I and Terry put in a very spirited discussion and meetings on putting the parameters together for this ordinance and decided that the old ordinance, which really hadn't hadn't had any traction, any force enforcement or any visibility for decades, quite frankly, to to make it a much simpler and more straightforward and more tenant-friendly by. So my question was specifically of the the board of the three representatives. I believe it would, it's also laid out to be an appeal board to heal up here appeals on an opted basis. So kind of to address what what Matt had to say about or Matt Hale about what to do if a tenant finds out that there's a, you know, a problem with the rent. I believe our proposal was to have the board consider an appeal as to whether rent was improperly increased over whatever the cap was for that year. My other question was, is there does the ordinance designate the person who actually writes the violations? So that it's clear that they they do get to the court and in a timely fashion so that there is traction and teeth to this ordinance for the tenants.
Phil, the answer is the enforcement mechanisms have been transferred to our code enforcement officer.
Great, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council members on this? Councilman Hirsch.
I just wanted to thank some of the tenant renter advocates who have shared their stories with Councilman Hale and me and others. I think that I think by far the the most constituent emails that I get are related to problems or issues with 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 rentals, whether it's unconscionable increases in rent, or whether it's facilities problems that that management is not addressing. That's not to say that all landlords and building property managers in town are not good faith partners. They are. But there it all takes us one in a building of 25 to make life really, really, really difficult for our residents. So this is, this is a really important measure. And also, you know, statewide, just to provide a little bit of context, you know, we've seen, it's not just in Highland Park, but we are one of the things that, you know, we value is that we do have a high rental population that allows for economic diversity and keeps property values at at a reasonable, at a the most reasonable as possible level where folks from different walks of life are able to find a home here, as the mayor illustrated in 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 your opening remarks when it comes to affordable homes. Rent has gone up by nearly 33% over the last year. And of course, there's there are a number of factors that have that 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 are that are responsible for that. But you know, I heard Newark Mayor Raz Baraka speak last two weeks ago at the governor's housing conference. This is a conference that's hosted by the Department of Community Affairs and the New Jersey Housing Mortgage and Finance Agency. And, you know, we really do have to get away from thinking about housing and those who occupy their homes as a commodity. This is all we have. This is and 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 many and many don't have this. And I know that I'm not, I'm not lecturing anybody here because I know that you all understand, but just just for the benefit of the public and why this is so important to address. It's one thing to provide advocacy and casework for, you know, on a piecemeal level for residents, you know, who need an advocate when navigating sometimes a very, very difficult tenant issue. But it's another that's really set good guardrails that landlords can anticipate and tenants can anticipate. You know, when it comes to budgeting, budgeting, when it comes to generating wealth and saving, you know, your ability to 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 save and generate wealth is greatly curtailed when you're facing a 52% increase in rent. I would argue that it's completely obliterated. And that includes addressing the the racial wealth gap, too, creating ways to 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 provide a way for somebody to live affordably while say, while while being able to put aside whatever it is that they can is 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 essential. And I do just want to just make make one more point. You know, we have we have a housing crisis in New Jersey. This is a piece of 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 addressing that. So it's just that, thank you, Terry and Ed for for putting in the hard work.
Okay, I I also.
Stephanie has her hand up.
I'm sorry.
Stephanie has her hand up?
Oh.
Yes, I have my hand up.
I don't see your hand up, but go ahead.
Yeah, I just put it down. Um, the as far as I saw, I guess it's capped at 5% in the in the draft. And so if if someone went to the rent control, let's say a landlord went to the rent control board, and I guess their hardship appeal was approved, does that now come to council, or how does that work?
Now, if if the new rent control board is charged with taking care of these hardship requests, whether it comes from a landlord or a tenant, and they approve it, it would automatically go into effect. So that means, for example, if a landlord had certain capital improvements, certain repairs, certain legitimate reasons why their rate of return was way below what what it should have been and considered by the board, and the board would allow an adjustment above 5% or greater than whatever the CPI adjustment was, that would be done administratively by the rent control board.
Okay, but they would need to end that. And, okay, and so that's the so they would apply, they meet, I guess, monthly and.
As needed. If there's a hardship appeal that's been requested, they would have to submit that in advance and request a hearing, and then we would engage the committee.
So how would the current landlords know that we put this ordinance into effect? Like, will they receive notice or?
We I I alluded to that in my overview. I was basically saying I could some education is required. I think the larger complexes, they pick up on this stuff really quick, but Scott in our code enforcement office has a pretty good contact list that we could mail out notice once the if the ordinance does pass and we're moving forward, that will let them know about that provision to the best of our ability. And then we're going to, as the as we, you know, build up the registration list, we'll notify people of the requirement. People come in all the time to get their places inspected, so we can hand it out at that time. So there'll be several ways, but we'll have to figure that out on an ongoing way as to how to make sure the education goes for the landlords, but also the tenant.
Right.
So would a tenant also in the scenario of a landlord not renewing their lease because they don't want to accept, I guess, the increase, would they also, would a situation like that go before the board or?
Well, I guess you got to, I would say the scenario, what do you mean?
They have to offer, they have to offer a renewal.
Okay, so they will offer. So so the scenarios in my head is going back to my bucket with the revow going on. So they can use that as a excuse, let's say, whatever, they did something in there and now they have. So so that's just my thinking, well, hey, you don't want to pay, maybe I'll find another tenant. Like, this is just how I'm thinking as far as landlords.
No, the way they, I'm sorry, the way that we've been working on this is that the there is a standard percentage increase that is allowed on a year-to-year basis to the same tenant. And so even if the landlord is going to get a bigger tax bill, they are still limited to what that 5% would be on the on the increase. Now, it is possible that they could file a hardship. And I, Ed, I would look to you, would they, would these hardship cases go to the same board that we're creating?
Yes. So my question about the board is does the board need legal representation? Does that board need an attorney at it? And if so, who is that? Because
That's a good question.
I I don't, I don't know who it is, but it seems to me that they might need, and that's an expenditure for the borough that we'd have to figure out where, you know, that that comes from, but I I don't know that that board has the legal you know, that I just think they would need legal representation of some sort.
Well, it it's possible, Matt, that they would. In other words, if they started. Well, it, it's possible, Matt, that they would. In other words, if they started to receive a number of hardship appeals, they might need the assistance of an accountant to figure out what a reasonable rate of return should be for a landlord in town. So they might need that, that sort of assistance. I mean, I'm the rent control attorney in the town I'm sitting in, Ewing Township. We have a rent control board. And I would say during the year, that board probably meets maybe four or five times, and I've had to go to two meetings. So it, it really is not, unless this just becomes overwhelming with the issues that come up. I don't think they're going to need much legal representation. And if they did, it was certainly provided initially. And if you wanted to hire somebody else to do that, you could certainly do that. But it really hasn't been a real burden for Ewing Township, I don't believe.
Okay, thank you.
LC, you have your hand up? You need to unmute.
Ed answered the question because I was gonna talk about if we, if there's a, a large amount, we start seeing a large amount of repeals from us to Stephanie's point. If we do this revow and a person that owns a three-family unit and they live in two, and the, the, it becomes so expensive that they're not renewing the lease, they're letting this person go month to month, and they really can't afford to have it there because their overhead is higher than what they're receiving in. That means they would be operating at a loss. What, what recourse would they have? And if this is going to be capped at, say, 5%, then that's when it gets into a whole legal situation. And they would have to make a decision because they can't operate at a loss. That was my question. What would happen in that scenario?
Well, the, the hypothetical family that owns three, three units, they live in what, one of them and they rent out two? And before, they were not covered by the ordinance. Currently, they're not covered by the ordinance. This new ordinance, one, one rental unit, you're covered. They would have to evaluate whether or not it is worthwhile for them to continue in the rental world. They might consider condominiumizing the units and selling them. Or they might retire them from the rental market and do something else with them. Either occupy themselves or, or, or not rent them for a period of time. And then when they come back on the market, if there's no tenant that is a holdover and staying in that unit, then they could adjust the rent to a market bid because it would have been a de-controlled unit. Now, if there just happens to be a person, as Terry described, who has a lease that expires, and then the landlord just let them go month to month for two months, and then decided they could beat the ordinance that way, we would have language in the ordinance that says you can't. And that if it's the same tenant, whether they went from a lease to a month to month, that's not de-control, their ordinance would apply. You'd have to look at the situation, the circumstance.
Okay, Councilman Hirsch, is your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, I know that we're, you know, this is, this is, this is early in the process, but we do, I think we do need to move quickly on this. When it comes to, I just wanted to follow up with what Stephanie said, but you know, when it comes to hardship appeals, you know, one of them, one of the many factors here is, is, is the revow and ensuring that, you know, our rental population does not incur unreasonable and outrageous rent increases due to a lot of factors. So what would, do, do we, do we need to, what, how do we determine what a, I guess, a framework of hardships that could be considered reasonable complaints would be helpful? And I'm not sure if that is part of other permissible ordinances.
Well, Matt, I, I think certainly if, for example, the revaluation had a tremendous impact on a rental property. In other words, it increased the taxes on that property. So that's an expense of operation. And let's say the fuel, the natural gas, or the, whatever they're fueled by, those prices with the inflation that we're in right now have gone up dramatically. And let's say the cleaning or maintenance service has just increased their expenses dramatically. It would be a factor, all these things would be factored in. And then the landlord would say, I'm entitled to a reasonable rate of return, which our rent control board would, would, would have to define and be satisfied with. And if he or she could point out that in the current situation we're in right now with the economy and all of the hits that a unit is taking in terms of the expenses, all of that together might lead the board to agree that the rate increase for this unit could be higher than either what the CPI calculates for 5% or is less. You really, you'd really have to wait to see what factors filtered in to fill up the financial pot and to see if it has such an impact on the unit as to make it financially infeasible to continue or, or not a reasonable rate of return. And these commercial properties have cap rates, they're called, take a look at all of their income. And we do that all the time in tax appeals. Excuse me, when you're trying to evaluate what the property is worth, you look at the cap rate, how much of a return they get. And that, that'll fluctuate depending upon the economy. And I think our rent control board would do that, and then they would make a decision.
So I think there's very good questions about this being raised. And perhaps we need to set those guidelines for the rent control board. Who would set the guidelines for them?
Well, we, we, first of all, the ordinance would have to define hardship increases. And that would be something, that would be a defined term. And I think we should, based upon this discussion, when we do assign to the board their responsibility to handle this stuff, we should probably filter in factors that should go into it. I, I think that would be a good guidance for them.
Okay. Councilman Hirsch?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I just wanted to follow up that the ordinance should also, I'm sensitive to the privacy of the renter, but would a, would, would an ordinance factor in things like, you know, cost of living increases? You know, what that, you know, if, if, if the renter so chooses, you know, what their, what their income is related to what the proposed increase would be?
Well, again, we, we would, we would take a look at the factors. That could be a factor on the, on the tenant's side of the ledger for the board to look at. I think we really haven't researched that part of it, but we will now. And we'll make sure that we can amplify that section to be able to say what you can or you can't request from a tenant and what is personal or private or the basis for it. I mean, the basis for it may not be like this young lady we heard from tonight. I can't sustain a 52% increase. I mean, that, we know she can't do that. But if, 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 because I've, it's COVID or I've lost my job or some factor that is personal to her, the, the ordinance is not going to regulate something on a case-by-case basis to say, okay, for you, it's 2% because it can't be 52%. It's gonna have to have some standards in there, and we're gonna have to spell those out. And I think we'll do that for the, we'll suggest that for the rent board.
Stephanie has her hand up as well.
Will there be a, I guess, a liaison to this board or?
You, you, you could, you could have one, certainly. Wouldn't be a voting member, but you could have one, sure.
And the, the, the members will be appointed by the mayor with the consent of council?
Yes.
There was a member in the past when we had, before we dismantled it, that's when we got into all of this. There was a board in place and you had a liaison, council liaison to the board.
And that was under human services and I would assume.
Yeah, yeah. Whoever has.
Oh, is it coal or, or housing? Well, housing, I know.
It was the person who handled rent, where that has the housing authority and that kind of stuff. It was under that portfolio.
Oh, no.
Okay, I, I think we should look at what other towns are doing in terms of their representative from council and use that as some guidance.
Well, we can certainly articulate the liaison role.
Right.
And then figure out the bucket it falls in.
Right.
You know.
I think that we need to also articulate the qualifications of the rent control people that, that, right now, as a landlord, as a tenant, and as somebody. Right, right now, the, the, what I read is that those are the qualifications, but, but maybe we need to think a little bit about what the qualifications of a, of a landlord are. Like, do, do they have experience with multiple properties? Do they have experience with one property? What are the experiences with a renter? Have they rented in Highland Park for a longer period of time? And then the third person, you know, this seems to me like some of the determinations that the rent control board is gonna, are gonna have to make are, are probably fairly technical. And, and, and so maybe just articulating something about, about the qualifications of the rent control board members and terms and, and alternates and, and things like that. That might be something that we also want to consider. I don't want to make it too complicated, but I think this isn't just going to be a job that, that anybody could jump into. It seems to me like this is a job that's gonna, could, could theoretically take some serious knowledge and effort.
I will say, I guess, one of my hopes, and it is a hope, it's not a certainty, but, and I know especially right now because of the, the, the stories we're hearing from renters, that there's a lot of activity. But our hope is for a lot of landlords having the standard, hopefully will, they will follow the standard and we won't have to have every one of these rate hikes. We're, we're gonna avoid some of these things.
Right.
Through the ordinance. So I, I understand because I have the same kind of knee-jerk reaction to, but I, I do think, I, I'm, I'm optimistic, I think, because we've had nothing for so long, that having this standard in place, I think there are a lot of landlords that want to comply.
Do it, right.
And I will do it and they will follow it. I'm not saying we don't have to be ready, but I, but I, I just want to remind, because I kind of went down that rabbit hole myself. And I, I kind of had to walk myself back. I think there are a lot of rule followers out there too. And I think I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, this is, you know, we have landlords who call me every year for that calculation because that's just what they use, you know, they, they follow the borough's lead on that. So I'm hopeful if we get the word out and we're consistent, that it's, I'm hoping this isn't our busiest board. I'll put it that way.
All right.
Yeah, and that, that does raise something too. Not only do we have to get the word out to the landlords, we also have to get the word out to the tenants, so that.
That's a harder lift because we don't know who they are and they're not on our NICSs always and things like that.
Right, but we can.
Oh, well, we'll certainly work on that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, boots on the ground, signs in the buildings.
Yeah, the ordinance, but again, it's like we have.
I mean, the NICS.
Yeah.
Right. By public postings and buildings, you know.
Right, exactly.
I do think, I think permanent rent increases will drive them our way, hopefully too. So if they get something that seems really unpalatable, they'll, they'll, like they have been popping up to us. So, but you're absolutely right. We need to figure that. Communication speaks out. Yeah.
All right, I have one more question. Has, like, in the past, Ed, you've seen, like, has, I guess, like, rents landlords or so, some of the largest scale, have they, have they sued towns or?
I know, my, my experience really has been what, what Terry just said, and that is that at this time of the year, they will check in with the rent control board, or me as the rent control attorney. And we do the formula every year, so CPI formula based on, you know, the stuff down here between Central and South Jersey, you do North Jersey. And we calculate what the permissible increase is for 2023. So the larger complexes will contact either the clerk or now they know to contact us, and we tell them what the calculation is. And I would say for the most part, larger complexes follow that pretty to the T. And if they don't, we'll get a call or a complaint from one of the tenants to say, I just got a renewal. I'm in a building that is covered by rent control since it's not one of the newer buildings. And I, and I think this is too great, and they'll tell us what it is. And if it is too great, then our job is to send a letter to the landlord and straighten them out and tell them that the increase can only be X. And then we follow up, the tenant will follow up and say, thanks, they've adjusted my rent. I should mention too, there's this crazy state law that was adopted in 1987 when I guess the legislature was encouraging the construction of large rental complexes at the time. I guess we were short on rental properties. And it says that if you do financing for your building and you request the town to be exempt from rent control, you have to be made exempt from rent control for the newer complexes for up to 30 years while they're retiring their financing. Up to 30 years. And most municipalities with the newer stuff coming online are shocked when they find out about that because oftentimes you have to tell the tenant who's calling up and find out, how, how old is your complex? Or we finally, we'll, we'll usually figure out from the construction department how old these complexes are and whether or not they're, they're covered by this state law exemption. If they are, they're exempt from rent control during that period of time.
Ed, could you, could you?
We had to put. Bye, Matt.
Yeah, no, could, could, could we, could we find the P L. number and?
I'll send it to you. Yep.
Thank you.
Ed, is, Ed, is that the initial purchase or is that if they refinance or?
The initial construction. And before they get the first C O., they can request of the town exemption from rent control. And it's mandatory. The town can't say no. Town has to grant them this rent control exemption.
So only new constructions, not sales?
Right, not, new, new construction of rental complexes, rental units, right.
Oh, okay.
Not refinance, re, new.
Not refinance or sells, like someone is selling?
I hear you, Stephanie, because we have a lot of our complexes sell, they, they get bought.
Yeah, they sell.
That wouldn't apply to our pre-existing.
New construction.
Yeah, that wouldn't apply. That's what I was, yeah.
No, I had that, you, you hit the nail on the head there. I was thinking the same.
You, you have to request this before the first C O. is issued for the new complex. And you'll see that in the draft that will circulate because it's the law.
Okay, any other questions or comments on our rent control?
Yeah, I would just encourage anybody to, you know, share their stories if they want to, you know, we need to hear these rent, we need to hear examples of what's happening. I, I think it's been really enlightening also just to get, you know, a better handle on, you know, at some point, I would love to have, you know, I've mentioned to Terry, you know, a regular convening of our landlords and also tenants just to, you know, really, you know, keep them in the loop throughout this, through, through, throughout this whole process. But it's really important that, you know, we hear what's going on. So I just really wanted to thank the folks who, who are attending tonight, but also everybody else who has shared their personal stories with us.
Okay, anything else on this topic? All right, seeing no hands, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We are moving forward, we're, we're going to move forward with this though, right? Is that, do, do we need to resolve that? Okay, okay.
No, this is.
No, 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 I know, but I've, just, 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 usually we do an informal, you know, are we okay moving forward?
Okay.
I'm okay.
And I'll check in with you and we'll, we'll, because you already have a good draft going, so I think we'll be able to push some of this through.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Night.
Night, everyone.
Night.